Thank you. Clerk will take the roll.
Commissioner Brassad, here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
And we're all here. First item, next item is tax claims and abatements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Discussion. Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item number five is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and the purchase card claims paid for the period ending February 23, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number six is to approve the minutes from the February 20th, 2024 county board meeting. Any changes, additions, subtractions? If there are none, is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Schulte. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. And we have, under Chair's remarks today, one item, and that is to consider for informational purposes a presentation from the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office annual report. And today we have, as everyone, many people know, the medical examiner that we have here in the Anoka County is the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. They go by MMEO. That seems like an odd, I mean, it's not odd, it's perfectly normal, but it's kind of hard to read, so I'm just going to keep saying Midwest Medical Examiners. The office performs death investigations, conducts post-mortem investigations, and provides education and consultations for the many counties it serves. I'm going to ask Commissioner Reiner, Chair of Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee, to speak more about the office. Commissioner Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess that acronym could be shortened to MEEO.
Yeah.
Midwest Medical Examiner's Office provides a scientific, consistent, and compassionate investigation into the circumstances of death, which result in the workload of thousands of cases per year, usually many hundreds of which require autopsies. The officers, forensic pathologists, are always busy, as are dozens of field investigators in office investigations and office staff. In 2023, the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office became the newly appointed medical examiner for Traverse and Ataski Counties, and the referral medical examiner for Bayfield County in Wisconsin. All counties due for contract renewals last year were satisfied with the level of service provided by the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office and renewed their agreements with the office. I think we're now handling 38 different counties. Also last year, the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office was awarded the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Foundation grant to fund interoperability to streamline death certificate entry and minimize human errors, which will greatly save time. And also, I brought up this at our last board meeting, but since we're talking about the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, I wanted to draw attention to it again. Four years ago, Shane Sheets, the director of the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, brought to our attention a problem the office was having with Department of Veterans Affairs doctors signing death certificates in a timely manner. The VA's policy is that if an individual in their care did not see their primary clinician within 120 days of their death, the VA would not sign the death certificate. The policy moves the responsibility to the medical examiner's and coroner's offices, which must locate all medical records and many times contacting the VA doctor that should have signed the death certificate in the first place, and redetermine the cause of death. Shifting the responsibility from the Veterans VA doctor to the Medical Examiner's Office delays the signing of the death certificate, causing many problems for grieving family, including undue stress. Sometimes these delays can be four to six weeks. We brought this issue up to the Association of Minnesota Counties, and they agreed to advocate for changes along with us. And recently, some of my fellow commissioners and I were in Washington, D.C., where we raised this issue with the National Association of Counties. They decided, via unanimous vote, to advocate for changes to the VA's current policy. This is a big deal for Anoka County, and really for the whole nation, since the VA services clients across the entire country. So thank you, Shane, and to the rest of the staff at the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office who have made this issue a priority. I feel like that there's a longer intro than we usually do for the Midwest Medical Examiner's report, but now, without further delay, I'd like to welcome Dr. Quinn Piper with the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office, or MEEO. And thank you for being here.
Oh, used to saying it. I'm aging, so it's cheater time. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us again this year. So as mentioned, we recently did add two counties in the past, you know, calendar year or so, Ataska and Traverse. So our office serves, or is the appointed medical examiner for 37 of Minnesota's 87 counties, more communities than any medical examiner office in the state. So this is approximately 32% of the state's population. We also provide referral services to Wisconsin counties. So getting to Anoka County specifically, in 2023, there were 2,406 total deaths. Of these, 1,737 were reported to the Medical Examiner's Office, and of these, we assumed jurisdiction, meaning we assumed responsibility for signing the death certificate, in 334 cases. Of those, you can see in the graph, the exam types. So we performed 177 post-mortem examinations or autopsies for Anoka County last year, and just for reference, overall, our office performed 1,300, over 1,300 autopsies for all of our entities. Of those exam types, as we phrase it, there is one classified as medical record review, which was referred to with the, similar to VA, the VA system is when we have to assume jurisdiction to sign a death certificate on a case that did not require an autopsy where it would be a natural death. So you can see we have quite a few of those. In Anoka County in 2023, this is the classifications of the manners of death, again, that the medical examiner signed the death certificates on. There were six deaths classified as homicide, 159 as accident, 112 natural, 51 deaths due to suicide, and five deaths classified as undetermined. Of note, there were 32 deaths in Anoka County that were due to gunshot wound or wounds, and then again, in all of our jurisdiction area, there were 172 total deaths due to gunshot wounds. Of these deaths, two were homicide and 28 were suicide. An overview of the accidental deaths in Anoka County, 52 were due to drugs or substance abuse, 96 were due to blunt force injuries, which includes motor vehicle crashes, falls with fractures, make up the majority of those, and then the tragic death of two infants due to unsafe sleep. There were 20 motor vehicle accidents, or incidents, as we call them really, in Anoka County last year that resulted in fatalities. Of the deaths due to drugs, 52, again, were due to drug abuse in Anoka. In 34 of those deaths, fentanyl was present, and then in all entities, we saw 240 incidents of fentanyl. So what's significant there, again, if you look at it compared to heroin, heroin was present four times, and five times overall. So clearly, when people say that, you know, they are seeking heroin, or using heroin, or given heroin, it's fentanyl. And in a lot of cases, people are now actively seeking fentanyl, and not heroin any longer. Additionally, methamphetamine was present in 18 deaths in Anoka County, 252 incidents in all of our jurisdiction. Cocaine is making somewhat of a comeback, was present in 15, usually that was rarely seen. And then xylazine, which you probably have seen in the news, which is kind of an additive, or combined in, mixed with the drugs sometimes, was present in three deaths in Anoka County, and then seven deaths in all entities. So xylazine is a veterinary medication, and it actually is not responsive to Narcan because it's not an opioid, and so that's one of the big issues with xylazine. So for a five-year comparison of deaths in Anoka County, you can see we had a rare year in 2021 where there were no homicides, but normally the homicides in Anoka are, you can see, five, and then there were six in the other years. Accidents peaked in 2022. On suicides, it looks like there was kind of an increase between 2019 and 2020. That's not the case. It's, normally the cases hover around the upper 40s, low 50s, and 2019 was just a brief little dip. But generally, it stays about the same. And then just our exam types by year, you can see our medical record reviews really vary, again, depending on the year. 2019, again, it looks like there was a bit of a lull, kind of overall. It was a, must have been a slower year for Anoka. Accident subclassification by year, again, one of the main things that we're always looking for is the drugs and substance use, and you can see there was a big peak in 2021. That year was notable for something else that I think we all, we all are aware of. But generally, we, you know, we certainly see a significant number of that. And then motor vehicles, again, you can see they stay generally about, about the same. This report was prepared by our morgue operations supervisor, Jamie Ryerson, who is here with us today. She made these beautiful graphs because I don't know how, and we're going to continue to try to get more statistics and such for, for the county as we go, because she's, she's about to get her, her Masters of Public Health. Thank you very much. And any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the doctor? Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Dr. Piper. Very informative. The, the information regarding the substance use in the system, is that a direct death because of the substances, or for a fatal crash, there happened to be substances in the system of the individual who passed?
That's an excellent question. For, when the 52 deaths, that would be 52 people who died directly due to substance use.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. County attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Quinn Piper and also Director Sheets for hosting our new attorneys over at the Medical Examiner's Office. I think it's important for everybody to remember that the medical examiners that we have here in Anoka County are independent medical examiners. You know, we trust their judgment in our criminal justice system. They work with our sheriff's CID unit. They work with us in the court system, but they are independent. I would say that, having spent some time with Director Sheets and Dr. Quinn Piper, that the investments that Anoka County has made, however, in the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office continue to pay off in, in spades for us. We really are in a position, here in Anoka County, where we have that kind of access to build relationships and foster communication with people in the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office that really make our practice in the criminal justice system better, because we can tap their expertise and their knowledge and their experience. So thank you for the tour, and thank you for, for working with us, and thank you for your independence as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Dr. Piper. Thank you again for being here and telling us all about the importance of Midwest Medical Examiner's Office. The work of your office is accurate, caring, and professional, and the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office is recognized and respected, not only here in Minnesota, but across the nation, as is evidenced by our recent, by your recent award from the CDC. The role you serve in our communities cannot be understated, as the death of loved ones can cause profound stress and sorrow, and the Midwest Medical Examiner handles these events in a sensitive manner, which helps people when they are grieving. It's not always an easy situation to walk into in a lot of cases, but it's always professional and caring, and I, we all appreciate all the work that your office does, and to you and to Shane and everyone else. Thank you so much for handling these difficult situations the other way you do. Thank you for being here.
And we'll see you next year.
Yeah. All right. Then we'll move on to committee reports, and the first committee report is the Transportation Committee, and we have a chair report, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Transportation Committee met on March, oh, sorry, that was, that's today. We met on February 28, Wednesday, February 28, at the Anoka County Transportation Division facility. Unfortunately, there were only two of us who are on the committee present, so there were two absent, so we did not have a quorum. So doing things a little bit differently, I'm going to recommend specifically to the rest of the board for approval of certain resolutions and contracts to approve. So that's how things are going to move forward this morning, but just also wanted to mention that there was no buddy from the public to offer public comment. So moving on to the number one action item, I recommend approval of Resolution 2024 TR-08, a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into Contract C0010637, a detour agreement with MinDOT to provide for payment by MinDOT to Anoka County for the use of Round Lake Boulevard, Constance Boulevard, 221st Avenue Northwest, and Viking Boulevard as detour routes in the cities of Ham Lake, East Bethel, and Oak Grove. Joe, take it away.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe McPherson. I'm the chief officer of transportation and the county engineer. We're approaching everyone's favorite season in Minnesota, construction season. Here we go. We're going to go straight from fall into construction. So this project here, I just want to clarify as well, this is not the, the large, exciting Trunk Highway 65 project in the city of Blaine. This is a maintenance project that MinDOT is going to complete this year, and it spans all the way from essentially 81st Avenue down in Spring Lake Park, all the way through Blaine, Ham Lake, and in the East Bethel, and it goes all the way up to 237th Avenue. So this is just a maintenance project. But with that, there's going to be some various road closures that take place, and that's what these detours are associated with. So the, the detours that Commissioner Jepson had mentioned relate to closing down both northbound and southbound Trunk Highway 65, just south of where Viking Boulevard intersects with that, there's that reduced conflict intersection. Just south of that, there's an existing box culvert underneath both the north and southbound lanes. They're going to close one lane, or one set of lanes, in each direction at a time, and so that's why you have separate detours set up on this. So, other than that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Jepson.
So is it, since you're starting up at the northernmost section of this, since MinDOT is starting at the northernmost section, are they gradually going to go south, or are they going to just, you know, go up north, go down south, or is there any logic to the plan of progression?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, at this point, I'm not 100% sure how the contractor is going to attack this project. It is a large project, so my assumption is they'll have multiple crews working on different elements throughout the summer. So the completion date is the end of the year, so they got a lot of work to get done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know that when we talked about this at the committee, that there was some discussion about how long the detours are, how stretched out they are from coming off 65, sending them as far as west as Round Lake Boulevard in some cases. And so it's going to be a headache, and there's also going to be, I'm sure, people trying to find shortcuts around this. But just to, to remind everybody, this is to fix, basically to fix the area where the box culvert is. Not exactly sure why they didn't fix that when they were doing the work a few years ago, but that's MinDOT's issue. But this is, this has nothing to do with redrawing, or recreating that intersection at 65. There's not, and a lot of people aren't really happy with that intersection on 65. But they're not doing anything about that. They're just taking care of what's underneath. So it's going to take some time. It is not, as you indicated, not the big construction project of 65, which will be coming later in Blaine, but this will cause some headaches for those traveling on 65, both north and south, at some point in time. As they're keeping traffic open one way or the other, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So we'll take that as you're offering the resolution, Commissioner Jepson?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number two.
Yes, I will offer the Resolution 2024 TR-10, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way for Project SP002606014, improvements at the intersection of Mississippi Street and 7th Street Northeast in the city of Fridley.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, members of the board, so this item and the next one are related to each other, so I'll just talk about the, this project here in one swoop. This is a project where we actually have noticed some safety issues with the intersection here. Mississippi Street is a east-west corridor in the city of Fridley. It goes all the way from East River Road on the west end, all the way to our east county line. So this intersection's just west of a school, and it's a corridor that we studied back in 2019 for corridor improvements. Currently, Mississippi Street in this area is a four-lane, undivided roadway with no turn lanes, so we've been looking at this corridor systematically to make necessary improvements. We actually received Highway Safety Improvement Program funds to offset the cost of this intersection improvement project, and this will be coupled with another project, same corridor, it's on the east side of 65 at Old Central Avenue. Both of these intersections are going to receive what they call a mini roundabout, or a compact roundabout, intersection design. The nice thing with that is, these intersections aren't even close to meeting warrants for a signal, but they do have some pedestrian concerns. Even vehicular traffic has some concerns here, so those roundabouts will do a nice job with that. But with that, this action item, we are going to likely need to clip the corners of the property in each corner there to construct the roundabout. We'll do our best to try and avoid as much as possible. The second item would be acquiring the right-of-way shown in the right-of-way plat.
Okay. Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, are we voting on both resolutions, or nine first and 10 later?
I think we're, Commissioner Jepson.
So to, to that point, I did offer the resolution for 10. I, I mixed up the order, so I, would it be better to do both at the same time, or can we do 10 first and then nine, or what, what'd you recommend?
If you want to discuss nine and amend the motion, you could probably deal with them both together.
Okay.
Since they're related.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I will amend the motion to offer the Resolution 2024 TR-09, and Resolution 2024 TR-10.
Thank you. Commissioner Schulte?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's, that's perfect. I agree with both. We should, we should not only authorize the preparation of the right-of-way plat, but also the acquisition.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just commentary. I, of course, appreciate this, since this is in my district, and you mentioned the school, right, so that has a lot of traffic, and then just a little farther, what is that, east, I think, there's, there's all those apartment complexes that are, that are fairly new as well, so Mississippi Street is going to change quite a bit, or has been changing with the traffic. So this is, this is great. Thank you.
Any other questions? County attorney.
Just want to make sure we've got a, a motion that was amended. Did, we got the second?
It was a resolution.
Resolution.
Very good. So it's offered together.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye. And that was voted on unanimously, and that was items number two and number three. So we'll go to item number four, Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, so the Chair of the Committee recommends approval to enter into Contract C0010636, a memorandum of understanding with the city of Blaine for temporary placement of FOC safety camera equipment on the county-owned signals and poles within Anoka County right-of-way to assist the city police officers in the city of Blaine. Joe, this is a, to me, a very exciting partnership. Could you explain it just a little bit more?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, members of the board, so over the course of the last several months, we've been working with not only the city of Blaine, but also the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. This is a newer technology that several agencies within Minnesota have already implemented. Essentially, it's a traffic camera that can, it has an AI portion of it, where it can actually see the license plates and gather data from that, and then they can utilize that data in real time to figure out whether there was like an amber alert, where they can track down cars, if there is a stolen car. There's a number of things they can do beyond what I know about, but essentially, it's a real-time tool, using technology that police officers, law enforcement can utilize to help do their job better and more efficiently. And so what it entails is, and the reason we're involved, is our signal systems throughout the county, and here we're talking about the city of Blaine, they're, they're a good place and a good structure to mount these cameras on, because they're a firm structure, they're there already and existing, and they can just mount the cameras on there. So we're essentially facilitating the pole. They're doing all the rest of the work. So FOC safety will provide the camera, they'll provide the maintenance that is necessary for this, and then any data capture that's on the city side, we have no part in that. But it's a good opportunity, as Commissioner Jepson had mentioned, to work with our law enforcement team, utilize the tools that we have, and the infrastructure we have to do their jobs better and safer.
Thank you, Joe. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution. Oh, no, you.
It's enter into the contract, correct?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We need, yeah, we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay, and seconded by Commissioner Brassad. Any other questions? Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just commentary, because I was, like, really fascinated about this when you guys were discussing it in the committee, and then I, I want to, oh, a couple, a couple of things too, because you mentioned the, the cameras on the traffic pole, poles, but they only look at the back of the cars, because I know that privacy, private citizen thing was, was an issue. And then in terms of this kind of emerging technology, so after the Transportation Committee, of course, and I wanted to talk about it with the chiefs of police in my district, and they all said the same thing in terms of just like a very positive, exciting, new technology that they hope to expand or look forward to as well. And then my only question about this, because I know we briefly talked about it in the committee, or you guys did, that this memorandum of understanding could potentially be maybe open-ended, or like a model, so as other cities, right, kind of use the county in the same way as this, that would be easily accessible for that would be easily accessible for other cities. And that was just, I guess, the question that I had, if I'm misremembering or not.
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioner, you're 100% correct. So the county attorney's office did a great job of putting this memorandum of understanding together with that in mind.
Yeah.
That there's likely going to be other agencies that as this technology continues to advance, and more partners are starting to use that, that we could either amend this MOU to just include another city, because a lot of the language is boilerplate.
Yep.
And would apply to any agency. Or it could be another MOU if they so choose, but the language is already there and it'd be very simple to move forward with.
Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, I remember hearing that there was some data privacy concerns around this type of technology. And this might be even more for County Attorney Johnson. But do we know, did all of that get worked out? And there is some, you know, like SOPs and understanding how that data and such can be used?
Joe, you had a?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioner, yeah, great point. And we had a long discussion about that. We're closely with the attorney's office to look at all of that, to ensure that we're not stepping over any lines, doing anything inappropriately. So with this system, the onus of operation of the system, any data that's collected, that is 100% within the city of Blaine. So that's their responsibility. Anoka County will not see any data. Essentially, we're just acting like a pole. We're just going to provide the location for the camera to be mounted to. But you are correct. There is data privacy acts that the city will be following and making sure that they're in compliance with. But that doesn't apply to Anoka County at all. We're not, we won't see any data, we won't collect any data, we don't record any data. We're literally just like a tree trunk for them to be located on.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. So we had a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. Item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend a award of contract C 0010639 in the amount of $464,100 to VINCO for the WS 07 Electrical Work Scope Elements associated with a Coon Lake shop replacement project in the city of Columbus. Joe?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chair, so at the last board meeting, we approved the rest of the work scope items that are associated with bid package two. For this facility replacement project, there were two bid packets. The first one was the concrete precast tip-up panels. We wanted to get that out early to ensure that there was no delay on fabricating those and getting them to the site. The second package included everything else. There was one that we didn't approve at the last board meeting. We just wanted to cross our Ts, dot our Is on that contract. But here today, our team has looked at it, and they are recommending approval of entering into this contract with VINCO to do the electrical work associated with the project.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the county board to enter into contract number C 0010639 with VINCO.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reiner, seconded by Commissioner Brassad. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number six.
As Chair of the Transportation Committee, I recommend a word of contract C 0010657 in the amount of $618,389.42 to Allied Black Top Company for the project CP 230200, the county-wide asphalt crack sealing project at various locations throughout the county. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So this is our standard annual crack sealing project, as you see in the image there on the screen. This is something that we do to prolong the life of our pavements, to ensure that water doesn't get into those cracks and cause any further degradation of the cracks or the pavement structure itself. So this is just one of those necessary items that we need to do to keep our roads in tip-top shape.
And do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Jepson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I know we've had a very mild winter. The last couple winters have been very extreme. And I know there have been a lot of cracks and a lot of shifts with the soil there for the asphalt. Is there any cost savings this year versus previous year in those crack ceilings?
Yeah, so Mr. Chair Commissioner, in the crack ceilings themselves, a lot of that is based on the freeze-thaw cycles. So we still had a lot of freeze-thaw cycles this winter, not as many as last year, but it's still got down below freezing many times. But with that, last year, you guys remember, a lot of agencies were running out of cold mix patch, and we were waiting for the hot mix plants to open up. So there's been a significant reduction in savings with potholes. So I know a lot of roadway users are happy about that. They're saving their struts and shocks on their cars and wheel alignments and everything else. But this year, we're definitely seeing the savings there. But this is something that I think is just a natural element we have to deal with in Minnesota.
Thank you.
And any other questions? This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number seven.
Yes, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, I recommend the authorizing the county engineer to advertise for bids for SAP 002603005, replacement of the traffic control signal system at the intersections of University Avenue and 86 Lane in the cities of Blaine and Coon Rapids. Joe?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is a project we've been working on with the two cities. You'll note by looking at the screen there that the signal's actually not located in the city of Coon Rapids. It's east about 175 feet or so. But knowing that it does service property, a fairly large property with commercial and retail occupants there, they are a good willing partner to work with us on this signal. So there'll be a cost share between the city of Blaine, city of Coon Rapids, and Anoka County. And this is a signal replacement. This is one of our older signals, and it is in pretty tough shape. We did look at trying to prolong the life of this signal system, knowing that there are some discussions right now at the North Town Mall about potential redevelopment there. I believe there's a new owner of that facility. So with all of that in mind, we did look at that. But the signal system is in such disrepair that we need to replace it. So the signal replacement will also include some ADA upgrades. There's not existing sidewalks at that intersection, but there's also not an area where if someone was walking on the side of the road, they could go up and stand and not be sitting in a puddle of mud or something like that. So we're going to make those improvements as well with this project.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jepson. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Meisner. Any other discussion? Questions? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Commissioner Jepson, any informational items?
Yes, Mr. Chair, no. That's it for my committee report. There are a few informational items on there, but you can get updates from our meeting through the county website. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. I just want to thank Joe and his team. I asked for an opportunity to go look at the construction on Coon Creek Boulevard, over the creek, and they were beginning to move the creek back to its normal flow on Friday, I think it was. And I thank Keith Rank for the tour and get to watch those guys put that in. As Commissioner Reiner told me, it wasn't going to be as exciting as I had hoped, but it was very interesting to watch. And then to watch some of the constructions that they were doing around that, to refill in the now empty bypass and get everything flowing through the creek, or flowing under the bridge. We still have about a month and a half, probably two months, to get, because we are waiting for the warm patching stuff to begin the actual rebuild. But they've got all the rocks laid out, and the shoreline is, I think, brought back into action. So it's holding everything back up again before they can start working on the top of the bridge. But I really appreciate the opportunity. And when I was talking with Keith, he actually, because I was always worried about going out there and talking and getting involved necessarily as a commissioner and not wanting to be in the way. But he said he appreciated the fact that I came out there. So he said he opens it up to any of the commissioners if they've got a construction project that they'd like to see and just see what's going on. And maybe Highway 10, it's a little busier out there with traffic. But, you know, some of these other ones don't have any traffic going through. So it's kind of nice to be out there. You just got to watch out for the big machinery. And Keith took care of me, so I didn't run into the wrong place. But he appreciated, and I think they did as well, as talking to a few of the guys that were working there. So I did appreciate the opportunity. Commissioner Meisner, and then Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, shoot, I did not, I did a poor job coordinating with you, because when you brought that up, I'm like, okay, that sounds really interesting. And then just appreciation of that presentation, because you guys kind of walked us through the entire process with the pilings. Anyway, I thought it was very fascinating. Poor Keith, I might take him up on that offer then, to just see that particular site, just because it, to move a body of water flowing, to do the work, and then move it back, I thought was actually pretty fascinating. So, thank you.
Commissioner Jepson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder, the Ramsey Gateway Project started yesterday. Is, Joe, just to inform the community for updates on how things are growing, where the next closures, detours, phases of the construction are, where should folks look online?
Yeah, great point, Commissioner. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, that project did kick off, which is nice. There's a lot of work to do this year. So Sunfish Lake Boulevard, that interchange will be constructed and open by the end of this year. And if you've driven by that area, you've seen a lot of change already. But as of yesterday, you're correct, they started construction. Now, I know when we talked about the project, there was going to be two lanes in each direction the whole time. There are some intermittent things here at the start of the contract where, in start of construction, where they do have a lane closed in each direction, east of Sunfish, and that is for some pipe jacking that's taking place over the course of the next week or so. But then it will open back up to two lanes for the rest of the summer. With that said, for those that are interested, they commute through there, they have businesses there, I encourage you to visit our website. And we have up-to-date information there with detours, maps, contact information. The hotline that you can contact is the same number that was used for the Anoka Solution Project. I know a lot of the community members got familiar with that number and that email, so that's the same. So if you've used that before, you can keep that in your phone. Otherwise, yeah, check out our website. That's a great point.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll move to the next committee, which is Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee report. Commissioner Reiner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My committee met on February 27th. All were present, and there was no public comment. Do have a few items for you to consider today. First item is to recommend adoption of resolution 2024 LIB 001, and this is a resolution accepting donations for library. And to give notice to those that do donate, I'll read the names of the people that donated. From September through December, book cart, so that's coming in at 242152. Loretta Hubert, in memory of Matthew Hubert, or is it Herbert, for $100. Julie Linehan, in memory of Lois Sederberg and Lonnie McCauley. Julie Wagner, in memory of Lynn Kalahar. John Nist, in memory of Jerry Lindstedt. Catherine Carey, for books by Mail Postage, for $50. Yolanda and Erling Fugeslow, in memory of Bill Fugeslow, and I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly, for $200. Kathy Slazar, in memory of Anna Labonte, and Jean Holzbach, in memory of Loretta Day, and that's for $50. Let's see. Yeah, this is a resolution, and I'll move to adopt.
The resolution has been offered. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two.
Okay, item number two, we've had some discussion on, and this is whether or not to join Minnesota Inter-County Association, referred to as MICA. There has been some negotiation back and forth. This is a good group to belong to, especially in the way of, you know, the benefit that they can bring to the county in the way of transportation issues. There is still some negotiating going on with this. I guess I would recommend that we table it, but I'll leave it for the board to decide.
I'll make a motion to table and return it to the Intergovernmental Committee at a time to be discussed. We have some more information to gather in conversations with Matt Masman from MICA and also some other information, I think, that we need to have in our hands and before we can make the final decision on this. So I'll make the motion to table it. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
No discussion on tabling.
Oh, that's true.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I think the proper motion is to postpone to an indeterminate time and to refer to the IG Committee. So if that's the motion, then we can proceed without further discussion unless it's about the topic of postponement.
Gotcha, okay. So I will change mine to a postpone it and to return to the IG Committee at a later time. And Commissioner Meisner, is your second hold?
Correct.
Okay. So it has been moved and seconded. Does this require a roll call vote then, or just a?
No, I don't believe it does.
Okay, then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this has been postponed to a later date. And we'll move on to item number three.
Item number three. I have a question for the county attorney first, because we go back and forth on postpone and table. And I've always learned that tabling is, you're tabling it until later in that same meeting to address. Postponing is for another date.
You got it exactly right, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Now, number three, and this is addressing a very, very interesting project.
Chair Commissioners, thank you. Yes, as indicated, we have a very unique opportunity for a development project in the city of Blaine. For a number of years, the city of Blaine has been inquiring properties for the 105th Town Center redevelopment project. More recently, we, there has been an opportunity in order to be able to expand that redevelopment effort and include properties owned by the National Sports Center and MASK. And there's been a request for property tax abatement from Anoka County. So with that, I will turn it over to our advisors. We have Shane and Jessica here. Also here is the county assessor, so we are more than available for questions. So, we are more than available for questions. There's kind of two main action items that we need today. I will note that details are ever-changing with this project. It is moving very quickly, and things are still a little bit in flux. So, the things that we're discussing today, there is a draft term sheet. We don't need to get into the nitty-gritty of the term sheet details. We're kind of looking for a consensus of are we moving in the right direction. We will present a more formal term sheet for action at a later date, and then authorization to move forward with a public hearing. So.
Thanks, Greg. President and, or Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I think there's a PowerPoint. Great, thank you. My name is Shane Redlang. I work for Ellers, and we are advising the county on this project from a financial perspective. So, we'll just go through real quick what is tax abatement. Tax abatement is an economic development tool where certain properties are abated. These properties still pay their full property taxes, and those taxes are then captured and used to fund, in this case, it would be to fund to pay for the construction of ten turf fields. The city has requested that the county and school district participate in the abatement for this project. Graphically, what tax abatement looks like is this. You've got baseline property taxes in blue. That's the development that exists before the abatement would come into play. The purple piece is the new property taxes for stuff that's built after the base has already been there. And then, in the end, after the abatement district or the abatement obligation ends, you have the property taxes that are much higher than they were in the before condition. So, in this project, the city has requested that the county participate to construct ten turf fields. The fields are owned by Minnesota Amateur Sports Commission, MASK, and they're managed by their nonprofit. The project cost is $12 million, and construction would happen this year. These ten turf fields exist today in grass, and they would be converted to turf, and they're outlined in yellow on this diagram. The majority of the property that would be abated as part of the master plan, as shown here, that would include a large stadium, a number of hotels, restaurants, apartments, and office. The city would issue the $12 million in abatement bonds to be repaid by the abatements from the city, county, and the school district. We would be abating the new development there, which I'll show in just a second, and then up to three other sites currently off-site that are under construction or near completion. So, again, in yellow, the ten turf fields are there, and the property tax to be abated, or the area to be abated, is shown in red roughly, which includes that master plan to the east or to the right on this diagram of the majority of the turf fields. The off-site commercial, which is this kind of trapezoid to the southeast of the main abated area, and then there's two apartment projects that are in Blaine, the Eris and the Glen Field, that would also be abated. Zooming a little bit in on the abated property or the main abated property, which does not include some of the apartments to the east of this red shape that could potentially be TIF districts if the city of Blaine and the developer work on that. But the majority of the abatement for the turf fields would be the stadium, the hotels, a sports and amusement area, some restaurant space, and again, up to these three off-site developments. So, the county's abatement would be up to 15 years and up to $5.3 million in gross receipts, not counting the time value of money. And the city is really taking the risk on this. If the abatement revenue doesn't happen, if the properties don't develop at the rate that we anticipate them to develop, the city is really taking the risk because they are issuing the debt for the project. The school district would be on the hook for about $6 million, and the city would be on the hook for about $7. And the difference there is just based on tax rates. The county has an abatement policy that has a current tenure maximum. The county board, our versions of the county board have seen this a couple of times over the past month and discussed the policy. And on the workshop meeting on Feb. 20, the discussion was that the best course of action is probably a waiver from 10 to 15 years for this specific project. And then, if you all wanted to consider a change to the abatement policy, you could do that at a different time. A little bit about market value. So, there's about $130 million that needs to be abated. And again, that depends a little bit on property tax class in order to service the debt that the city of Blaine would issue for the project. There's about $78 to $116 million that would be new development, again, in that red shape just adjacent to the project. And then about $53 million in that off-site projects, those two apartment projects, and then that one commercial site to the southeast, the trapezoid. What that represents in current property taxes with current tax rates is about $283,000 on the new development. If that were to magically appear today, that's just for scale. And then, the off-site is about $172,000. So, there is a term sheet. As Greg mentioned, it's non-binding at this time until the county would consider it theoretically on April 9, after they have the abatement hearing, if you all move forward with the action recommended today. The bonds, again, would be issued by the city of Blaine and not the county. The abatement would be for the new development and potentially up to these three off-site projects. The term would be 15 years. Currently, we're looking at '27 through '242, up to $5.3 million from the county. Again, it would be contingent on the county or the city and the school district doing a similar abatement for the same parcels in the same term. And again, we looked at the business subsidy policy and the statute, and Kennedy and Graven, your counsel, has opined that the business subsidy policy doesn't apply here, mostly because this is abatement for a public project, for generally a public entity. We're abating these funds for the turf fields, not for the new developments themselves. On Feb. 20, the county board workshop meeting heard the project, got an introduction to the project. On Feb. 27, the county board IG meeting, obviously, we're here today discussing that action and that recommendation coming out of that committee. Today's the 12th. Again, we're reviewing the terms and then hopefully calling for a hearing so that the county could hear that on April 9 and consider approval of a final term sheet, which would have a few of the blanks filled in, a few of the red marks gone on the term sheet that's included in the packet. And then, somewhat in parallel with that, we'll be working on an abatement agreement with the city and the school district. And then, so sometime after April 9, you would consider an abatement agreement that would formalize the term sheet. And with that, that's a brief summary of where we are. There is a recommendation in the packet, and it reads generally like this, to approve, move forward with a non-binding term sheet, and then call for a public hearing on April 9. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shane. I'd like to get a motion on the floor, so that we can have some discussion. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jepson, second by Commissioner Reiner. Any discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, first, thank you so much. And Jessica, when we worked shop this, I mean, I know I had quite a few questions. It's very unique arrangement, so a little bit complicated. And then, unique in terms of Anoka County as well. I did have one particular question, because there's three entities, right? City of Blaine, Anoka County, Spring Lake Park School District. The last time we had met, I think the timeline today should have been an update from the Spring Lake Park School District. That was the one thing that was sort of floating as well. Do you have an update? I assume, since you're here today and this is on our agenda, that things are also moving forward in a positive way for Spring Lake Park School District, is my question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Commissioner Meisner, yes, the school district did workshop the project, and the feedback from that meeting is that they are supportive of it. They haven't voted to approve the project, much like the county hasn't. And so, we see that going in the direction of them approving it. But again, the term sheet and all the action that you all are considering is dependent on the city and the school district doing the same thing that you're doing, so that everybody's in it together. And of course, somebody has to be first.
Yes.
But from what we're hearing from the city and the school district is that everybody is moving in the same direction.
Excellent.
Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, I just want to say a few things about this. You know, there really does have to be, for me, a certain threshold for me to get on board with this kind of abatement project. And really, for this project, it kind of meets that threshold. First of all, it's structured great for the county. We have absolutely no risk. The city is taking all the risk. So, just starting off, that's kind of the best thing. There's, in my opinion, there's just only upside to this abatement and no downside. You have a project that is going to be a minor league baseball team, and a stadium, and hotels, and recreation, and shops. And I mean, it's just a fantastic, like you said, $130 million project to develop this amenity for residents. We're being asked to abate $5.3 million. So, the land that we're abating those dollars for, we collect tax on. We continue to collect tax on. This land is special use, and it would probably be at least another decade plus before anything would be done with it because of its restrictions on, you know, how it has to develop. And so, it can sit there empty, and we can collect those taxes. Or, we can support this project, which is grander than this abatement area. But it's really about $350,000 a year that we're abating that wouldn't be there if it weren't for this project. People have to understand that the dollars that we're abating are created by the development. If the development doesn't happen, those dollars don't occur. And so, like I said, there's no downside to the county doing this because there absolutely is no loss. And this does not cost residents in tax dollars one penny because of that. It is a 15-year period, which is longer than Anoka County is comfortable with. But in the graphs and, you know, all the graphs and all the estimates that, you know, were being presented are all very conservative. And in those conservative estimates in for that 15-year period, it's showing a consistent valuation of that property that would be abated. And that's just not realistic, but it is very conservative and, you know, realistic in presentation to offer it that way. There will be increase in valuation over that time. And in that increase in valuation, there will be an increase in taxes generated. It's 15 years, but what I've seen in these kinds of projects is that, you know, it's probably more like 12 years, 13 years, because there will be, we will be able to get to the threshold of $5.3 million much quicker, I think, than what the estimates are. That's just my estimate and what I've seen and what I've experienced. So, at the end of the day, though, I mean, you just don't, because of all the pieces of the puzzle fit, you just don't say yes to it. You have to just really objectively look at the project, and is it a good project? And everything I've seen about this project, it is a fantastic project and would be a great amenity not only to the city of Blaine, but entire county of Anoka and other counties. I mean, this is going to be a draw from, you know, it's going to have a far reach. And so, you know, with that, I am definitely in support of this. Hasn't, I haven't been in support of this all along, but as it has evolved, I'm a yes. And so, it is a good project. It does meet the but-for test, and so I support.
Commissioner Schulte.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I'll be brief. I understand the votes are here to pass this. I am not in support. I see this as a subsidy to the state of Minnesota. I don't see this as a job creation tool. This is an abatement of taxes for a state-owned facility. I think we're hurting a struggling school district in a levy-strapped county. The $5.3 million that's asked of the county equals over a 3% levy increase. A few commissioners here were reticent to increase the levy to cover existing operations and staff benefits at a recent levy. And now, we're thinking about augmenting state assets for recreation. I'm a no vote on this for that reason, and for many other reasons I'm not going to go into now, not the least of which is changing an abatement policy that we have stuck to for many, many years. So, again, I won't go into all the different reasons now, as I know the votes are here to pass this, and there's no reason to be here forever talking about it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Schulte, because this is complicated, and technically, what, a lot of what you're saying is true in terms of the tax abatement is for MASK. But the way that it works is that it unlocks the whole entire project. So, but again, I appreciate your comments. And then, we're not actually changing the policy. Thus, we're offering a waiver and keeping our policy intact. So, that is a distinction that I do want the public to understand. And then, as far as the levy, I don't know. I don't think that's correct in terms of we're going to have to increase a levy to abate for 15 years. I don't think that's the correct mechanism that you're describing it as. Correct me if I'm wrong. But you kind of laid it out a certain way, but that's actually not how it's applied of what we're doing today. Thank you.
Commissioner Brassid.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Schulte, do you want to respond to that question before I move on, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brassid, I'm not going to drag this. I know I'm right. I've done the math. I know how it works. I'm not going to drag this out, and I don't want to get into arguments. It's not productive.
Just didn't want to move to another subject if you wanted any rebuttal there. I do have a couple of concerns, which I've expressed really from day one. At one point, the city of Blaine was looking at going down the HRA lane, which I would have fully supported. What's being proposed right now is a waiver to a policy that we have never, ever, ever utilized. My suggestion, when it was discussed, was that we need to look at our policy and have a really good policy before we grant a waiver, before we subsidize. I mean, the whole dollar amount is $12 million, so keep that in your mind. $12 million that the city, the school district, and the county, we have to levy those dollars. And Commissioner Schulte was exactly right. We have to add that to our levy in order to turn around and pay the city two times a year over 15 years for that to equal 5.3. That is a taxpayer subsidy. I'd turn to Pam or Alex. If someone wants to address, I mean, is that correct? These end up being taxpayer dollars that are collected to apply towards the abatement.
Commissioner Brassid, members of the board, Commissioner Brassid is correct. It is an increase, an economic development abatement would be an increase to the tax levy. We would be required to collect that tax amount, and then twice a year, according to the worksheet and the agreement that's being discussed, we would issue an abatement back to the city of Blaine.
So, if I could continue, Mr. Chair, thank you. So, for the next 15 years, we would look at that, our share of $5.3 million as an outstanding ongoing expense until the $12 million has been met. That's, I struggle with that, knowing what we have coming up. We have a huge project coming up in our jail. We had a hard time getting to agreement on a levy this year. Adding $5.3 million to our overall scheme, which is going to benefit state land, much to what Commissioner Schulte referred to, for the benefit of that, I just don't think it's responsible. So, from the policy not being followed, offering a waiver right out of the gate, I just don't think this is in the best interest. I would like to say that the proposal of the project is exciting. I think the project is good. I just don't think it should be on the back of the taxpayers for 15 years on an abatement policy. We've never used him. We're just going to give them a waiver and say, go ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, so this, you know, talk about we're collecting dollars, and we have to levy dollars, and then we have to give it away, and that there's going to be this increase, and it's the backs of the taxpayers and all this talk. This project and this abatement doesn't cost taxpayers one dime. We collect those dollars, but those dollars that we collect, we wouldn't collect if it wasn't for the project. And that's something, a distinction that people have to understand, that the dollars that are collected are dollars that would never be collected if it wasn't for the existence of this project. So, it's a little disingenuous to, you know, have this big drama about, you know, that we're taxing the people and that we're, can't pay for a new jail and all of this, because the dollars that are coming in, yes, they're being levied, but they're being levied from a project that would only be collected from, if it exists. If it's not there, those dollars aren't there. So, the net cost to the residents is zero.
Commissioner Meisner.
You know, I'll allow Commissioner Jepson to go, and then, since I already spoke.
Okay, Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is a unique project specifically from my perspective. When I was on Blaine City Council, starting in 2017, us as a council and Blaine staff, really, we're focusing on how could we set Blaine apart and make the uniqueness of our sporting reputation, building on that and making it better and making it more known. At the time, over the next following years, we had heard from residents saying, we need a downtown, and there's no replicating the beauty of downtown Anoka. Suburb cities have a very, very challenging time doing that. And so, we knew that was not on the table. But using our sports destination, the city of sports destination, was something we embraced. And really, that area of 105th became a priority for the city, knowing that there were a lot of businesses that wanted to move. There were a lot of empty buildings that couldn't be leased again. So, we intentionally, as the city, determined to purchase those businesses that were already wanting to leave, purchase the properties that were already blighted. And really, with that city control of owning that land, we could create what we had heard from residents in what they wanted. High-end grocer is always something to consider. More recreation, restaurants, amenities, because one of the things that is really hard for Blaine, as well as, I think, Anoka County, when people come to our county, they come for what they want to have the services provided or whatever it is, and they leave. And that's something that we need to do a better job, and the city wanted to do a better job of doing. We needed to, when individuals come to the sports center, when they come to Fogarty, when they come to Victory Links, we want to keep them there. We want to keep people's dollars within the city of Blaine, and more importantly, within Anoka County. And that's a good thing. So, this is the project moving forward over the last six, seven years that came to fruition. And the project, as Commissioner Brass, this is a really, really good project. This is a really, really unique opportunity. And yes, it is $12 million. But if you look at how other stadiums- But if you look at how other stadiums have been funded in the past, there is far more public dollars going into those stadiums than this specific example. And to that point, I would not be okay. But this is $5.3 million that the county is at no risk. Now, yes, it's a unique situation, abatement, totally get that. But the policy has been that way for, I don't even know how long, and it's never been questioned until now, because it is such a unique situation that we're in. And we're not changing the policy, we're just waiving a date. We're waiving from 10 years to 15 years. All right, just to clarify. And also, with the risk of the $5.3 million being recovered within 15 years, there is no risk to the county to lose that. Now, if you want to talk about unique unprecedented actions, I mean, we've given companies $1 million cash before. To me, that's a very unique situation. This, to me, this, what we're doing now, this conversation that we're going to have is far more conservative, far more fiscally responsible than just giving away cash, right? But what you also have to consider is the longevity of the project and the value of the project. Yes, today, $12 million, that's a high price tag. But if we don't, and this is not a threat, this is the reality of things, if we, the school district and the city, don't move forward with these approvals, this project will not happen. And by saying no to this, you are also saying no to future development. My husband and I moved to Blaine 20 years and two weeks ago. One of the main reasons why we moved to Blaine is because there was supposed to be a football stadium built. Whether those questions were legitimate, not legitimate, whatever, we all know that U.S. Bank Stadium was built in downtown Minneapolis. We were moving from a suburb of Atlanta, Georgia, and we knew that if, honestly, a football stadium was going to be built in our backyard, all the amenities would come along with it, right? Clearly, that didn't happen. But with this project, this project is not only going to draw a $600 million valued in property taxes, okay? Can we just say, okay, $12 million right now, today? The amount of value that this project is going to have is huge. And that's a conservative number, an incredibly conservative number on the property value. So, let's just keep that into perspective. The amount of earnings that this county can, the amount of property tax revenue that this project can potentially bring, and I think, let me just correct this, actually. I think conservatively, the assessor put it at, apologies, more like, oh, shoot, sorry, estimated three, estimated value, sorry, $420 million, estimated value for the project. So, just think of that, and the amount of money that, you know, we're talking about $12 million, actually, $5.3 million right now. But if this project doesn't go, you're also saying no to the potential of $420 million in property value that you could get on property tax. So, to me, this is a no-brainer. It's a partnership with county, city, school district, without, you know, possibly some taxpayer dollars. Obviously, that's being debated right now, so I don't want to go into that. But, you know, I think it's the best use of our process, the best use of our time, the best use of our money, knowing what will happen. And construction on this project will happen this year, if this moves forward. So, that, it's not just a pie in the sky. This is a reality that will happen with all of us saying, "Okay." Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just, I think this will be the last time that I speak on this topic. Just some commentary, you know, Commissioner Reiner, I don't believe that Commissioner Brassad is being disingenuous. We all have our vote, we all have our perspective. Whenever it comes to financial topics, typically, we can disagree in philosophies around that. The one thing, though, I mean, Commissioner Jepson really hit a lot of the points I was going to talk on, but Commissioner Brassad and Commissioner Schulte both kind of have this perspective that we are somehow benefiting the state, the state gaming thing. I am in complete disagreement in terms of that perspective. I think that's pretty short-sighted. Technically, you are correct. We are, in fact, abating mask. But what it is benefiting is the region beyond just the city of Blaine. This is, that's who's leading it, but this is a county visionary thing, which hasn't happened since, what, the National Sports Center and the TPC both happened to be located in Blaine. So, I mean, I assume at the time, back then, when those initiatives were being brought forward, you know, there's risk in everything, but now, look at what has happened to this area because of the National Sports Center, because of TPC. So, this is an opportunity that we get to be a part of today to move forward. So, I think that's really exciting. Again, I see the benefits around that, not so much about us doing this transactional thing with mask. It's a broader vision. Thank you.
Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, I just want to respond, it's, you know, there's those that might be against this that want to use scary language, like the levy's going to go up, the net effect. Anybody that says that this costs, anybody in Anoka County tax-wise a dime is not being truthful. The levy will go up from dollars that will be generated from a new project, and then, we're going to take those dollars and abate. There is a net effect of zero to any taxpayer in this county, and all the risk on this project, all of the risk, is on the city of Blaine. So, that means that Anoka County has zero risk. Zero risk, zero cost to the residents, and we support the largest city in Anoka County with a project that they had great vision for, and it's coming together, and I hope it does.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded on item number three. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Nay.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Yes.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes. We also have to set on 3A, adopting a resolution. Commissioner Jepson, you want to?
I would like to.
Commissioner Reiner, Commissioner Reiner, do you want to read through that?
Yeah, this is just, consider adopting Resolution Number 2024 IG-01, and this resolution is calling for a public hearing on the proposed property tax abatements for the proposed, or purpose of issuing tax abatement bonds to finance certain public improvements.
Thank you.
And I would, I would move to adopt that resolution.
The resolution has been adopted for the public hearing. Greg, do we need any more information? It's April 9th, I believe, we're setting this for. Did I get that date right? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Four to two in favor. And is there any other items for the IG committee?
No other items are coming before us today, and so, rest are informational. So, back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the Parks Committee report, and that's Commissioner Reiner as well.
Okay, my committee met on Tuesday, March 5th. All committee members were in attendance, and there was no public comment. We've got a few items before you today. First item is, the committee is recommending the county board award a contract to Larson Engineering from White Bear Lake, Minnesota, in the amount of $375,804 for design and engineering services for Bunker Hills Regional Park Improvements Project. Jeff, you have anything to add?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Perry, Park Director for Anoka County. I would just add, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is a long-awaited project to rebuild some infrastructure at Bunker Hills Regional Park, one of our highest-visited regional parks in the county. We're focusing on roadways, parking lots, and trails, and this is just for the design component. The total project cost is $3 million, and the contract before you is to hire Larson Engineering, a firm with a very good reputation. The county's worked with them in the past, and we stand ready to implement this project.
Okay, yeah, and this is the first of four phases in this project. Mostly, this is just concept design and engineering, but there will be, I guess, when we're all done, about $3 million spent. Those dollars, though, coming from legacy funds and the new active transportation funds from the state.
I'll move this, I'll move this, or this contract, for this contract.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, and this is Contract C0010642. Discussion. Just for the sake of the public, these are some of the trails, especially along up in the northern part of Bunker, near the railroad tracks. I know that these trails have been talked about for a while from the public, and now we've got the dollars to get working on those, because there are some cracks and issues for those who probably, not so much for biking or walking, but more for those who are on rollerblades and things like that. But, so, we're getting some of those updated and getting those, make it smoother and give better access all across the park. So, it's a good project. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number two.
Item number two, we've got a change order, and it's, the committee is recommending that county board approve a $50,000 amendment to the contract with TKDA for the design of the Bunker Hills Water and Sewer Project. This is Contract Number C009338. And basically, I think the city of Coon Rapids required additional design changes, and there were a lot of different things that came up once the TKDA got involved. Anything to add, Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Yeah, we're tying in the Bunker Hills Wave Pool, Bunker Beach Facility, and the campground facility into the city's water and sanitary system. And the challenge before us is tying in effectively to the existing lift station, which is located on the southern end of Bunker Hills Regional Park. So, we're just working through a storage tank that will be required, a memorandum of understanding, and a maintenance plan to effectively tie into the city's system. And we're optimistic that we can get there. There's just a few additional design costs associated to get there. So, working very cooperatively with our partners, with the city of Coon Rapids here. And at the end of the day, this project will bring well-needed city water and sanitary services to Bunker Hills Regional Park.
I'll move it. It's been moved and seconded. I moved it, Commissioner Schulte seconded. Any other discussion? This is something that we've been working on for a while with the city of Coon Rapids, and I understand, having been in the role of mayor before, and that different projects coming up, when you have stations like that, you want to make sure that they're not going to be overwhelmed. We're trying to rest assured that this is just going to be the summer months. We're not worried about, we're not worried about water running through their, into their thing for the winter, or the most of the year, but we understand that we want to make sure that everything is copacetic with the city. So, we're happy to take this on and cover this $50,000 amendment, and then get working on the project later on this year. Any other discussion, otherwise, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Item number three.
Item number three, our committee recommends the county board approve an amendment existing, or extending, the grant period by one year for the Metropolitan Council Equity Grant Agreement that allows both Anoka and Washington County the ability to conduct learn-to-ride bike programs throughout the regional system. There are a lot of kids, actually, that grow up not learning how to ride a bike, and this assists in them. Let's see, what else can we have on? Jeff, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Mr. Chair, members, yeah, this existing grant sunsets at the end of June of this year. We're simply looking to extend it. There's a little balance in the grant that Washington County will utilize. Anoka County's portion's already been spent. We purchased some new bikes and a trailer to bring these programs out to these children that have never learned to ride a bike. We continue to plan on delivering those services for years to come. So, it's been a great investment for Anoka County, and we just need a simple amendment to extend the term of this particular agreement for one calendar year.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number four.
Item number four, our committee recommended that the county board approve the purchase of service agreements with the Conservative Corps of Minnesota to assist with natural resource restoration and park maintenance-related projects, not to exceed $100,000. Let's take a look at that. Yeah, basically, we've been contracting with them for over 12 years now, and this is maintenance that we do annually, and like I said, not to exceed $100,000. Anything to add, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Reiner, Chair, and members. This is an outstanding deal for Anoka County. I often say it's up to $100,000 well-spent, because we get five crew members, a supervisor. They come fully trained, equipped with vehicles, computers, fully insured, the whole nine yards, and it's 100% funded through the Legacy Program. And we do park maintenance and natural resource-related restoration work across the Anoka County park system. And again, it's a great bang for the buck, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with Conservation Corps of Minnesota, Iowa, for the next year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Reiner seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry to nitpick Commissioner Reiner, but I feel like Commissioner Schulte, right now, just to correct your verbal, you called it the, I believe, the Conservative Corps of Minnesota, and it's conservation, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Yeah, the rest of the items on my agenda are informational items, but I would like to highlight one, and that's that, you know, in Coon, let me see here, we've got the city of Coon Rapids built a pedestrian bridge over Coon Rapids Boulevard, and the cost of that bridge, I believe, was $6.7 million, six and a half, 6.7, something like that. And they've asked us to participate. We've recently received some state dollars, I think, close to $5 million. And so, with that $6.7 million project, we are going to assist them with a quarter million dollars to help pay for that bridge. And that completes my report, and back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Moving down to item number nine, this is consider, excuse me, Consider Resolution 202427, Resolution Regarding the Resignation of Commissioner Matthew J. Look, Declaring a Vacancy on the County Board, and Calling for a Special Election. I'm not sure if we, Pam, do you want to go over this at all, or are we just going to go with what the resolution is and ask for a motion, or?
You can just go with the resolution.
Okay.
I don't have anything more to add. As indicated on the resolution, the candidate filing period would be May 21st through June 4th. In Minnesota, we do have uniform election dates, so the special primary election, if there are more than two candidates that file, would be August 13th. If there are two candidates or less, that then becomes the general election date. So, if there is a primary, meaning more than two candidates, then the special general election is November 5th, and the winning candidate takes office immediately after filing their, receiving their certificate of election and taking the oath of office.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. That was a good explanation on the special primary date. The filing dates are here as well, and that, for the fact that people who are interested, remember, if there's two candidates or more, then we go that the first date, the 13th, is a primary. Excuse me, if there are more than two candidates, the 13th is a primary. If there are two candidates... If there are two candidates or less, that is the general election, and this is this is in District One. Do I have an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Been offered by Commissioner Brassad. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, members of the board.
County Attorney.
Thank you. So just so that everybody's clear and so that the public's aware, this resolution accomplishes three things. Number one, it accepts the resignation, which is a written resignation, from Commissioner Look for District One. Number two, it declares a vacancy in that seat. And number three, it sets the special election. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have a question, Reiner?
No, I was just going to comment that it'd be nice to have an election in August so that we can replace that seat and have representation for District One as soon as possible, although for someone who's ran for election in August, it's not very fun for those running. But it would it would be nice to, you know, have that seat replaced ASAP.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move down to item number 10, Consider Approving the Following Related Relating to Appropriations for the 2024 Memorial Day Observances. We have appropriating pursuant stat, pursuant state statute 375.35, $200 for each, to each post of a recognized military service persons organization or society organized and existing in the county, holding charter from Congress or incorporated in the state for defraying the expenses of Memorial Day exercises, which submits a written request to the county administration by December 31 of 2024. And do I have an offer of, we'll start with 10A. It's, so this is this is just not, not a resolution, this is just, I may want to make a motion for 10A. It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner, or excuse me, Reiner, seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, we need roll calls.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, roll call vote. I flipped over, sorry.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. This is also a roll call vote. This is doing item B, 10B, reimbursing pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 375.34, expenses up to $200 to any military service persons organization or society holding charter for from Congress or incorporated in the state, which exists outside the county but holds Memorial Day services in the county, not to exceed the total reimbursement of $1,000, and which submits a statement in writing by December 31, 2024 detailing the expenses incurring in such services. And I will move that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item 10C is appropriating pursuant to, again, Minnesota State Statute 374.34, up to $2,500 to the Anoka County Veterans Council to aid in the observance of Memorial Day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Discussion, hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Now, we have item number 11 is to committee report our committee appointments, consider reappointing George Borrell to the Anoka County Community Action Program as a public-sector representative for a term ending March 2027, and that's, that's my appointment, I guess. That doesn't require a vote. Commissioner Jepson, you have a question?
No, sorry, just to just to clarify, that is, Mr. Borrell was appointed earlier this year or end of last year to fill Jerry Peterson's end of term, and now this is a renewal of that specific term into 2027, and I will move to reappoint George Borrell.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jepson, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. And then item B is to consider, for informational purposes, this is my appointment of Commissioner Scott Schulte to the Transportation Committee for the remainder of the program year of 2024, that's replacing Commissioner Look as he resigns. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome, and welcome aboard. That's right, we do have an additional agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, consider the following as recommended by the Management Committee, and I will turn that over to Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee did meet today at 9:30 a.m. There was no public comment in person or via email, but I do always accept them. Anyone can email me at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. The reason that this is coming before you immediately today is for timing issues. So what I bring before the full board today is to approve a proposed update to the Anoka County Personnel Rules and Regulations. So this would be effective as of today if this passes. On there was basically timekeeping as well as employee payroll and then incorrect pay. So the full board did workshop this previously where we where we were able to ask our questions and different things like that. So this is the formal proposal of changes in rules and regulations, and I will go ahead and move that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Jepson, moved by Commissioner Meisner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved, and if there's nothing more to come before the county board, we are adjourned.